Okay. I will call this regular Township Council meeting of February fifteenth, 2022, to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting a meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December twenty-second, 2021. Where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December twenty-eighth, 2021, and the Newark Star-Ledger on December twenty-seventh, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel Twenty-One at seven PM Sundays. Seven PM Sundays? Yeah? They changed the time?
Seven PM Sundays and Wednesdays, yeah.
All right, it used to be noon on Sundays. All right, and they're also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net. Would you all join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of this land, one nation, under the ground, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all. Please remain standing while a moment of silence for our former Mayor Frank Ferreira, who passed away last weekend. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Ms. Graniani?
Here.
Mr. Negria?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barberio, Business Administrator Fred Carr, Township Attorney, and Township Clerk. You have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, March first, 2022, at seven PM. Agenda meeting, March fifteenth, 2022, at seven PM, a regular meeting. Presentations, Mayor?
Yes, with regards to COVID, between February first, our last meeting till today, there had been two-hundred-and-twenty-four cases, which is an average of fifteen cases a day. As you see, the COVID is starting to decrease, and as they said it would in the later parts of February. So hopefully, in the future, they lift all the mandates that they have in place, and we can get back to some sort of normalcy. Also, yesterday, we met with the Committee for TNR to discuss, one, change in the ordinance. We also got a court order from the judge to remove the cats, but right now, from what I understand, there's a stay. An attorney that's representing D'Amico will be going in front of Judge Scala this Thursday to try to keep a stay and find a solution for the, a solution that works, that hopefully works for the trap-neuter-release program right now. We did discuss various types of things that we could do in that area, in any area, actually, but we still have to wait to make any moves after the stay is heard on Thursday. But we're in the progress to continue to meet, come up with a solution, because as everybody knows, you know how I feel, and I know how probably mostly everybody feels up here, that we can't allow for a situation like this to overflow into neighborhoods and onto other properties. And we have to be able to monitor that and work that out, because although our ordinance states we have a caretaker, we will ultimately have to handle it if the caretaker cannot handle it. So that ordinance will be, and also, we had the Township Attorney with us, Michael Lavery, to find a solution to the trap-neuter-release. That being said, once the court order comes down, we're gonna have to respond and find a way to either contain these animals or trap them and bring them into the shelter. So that's where we are right now, and I will keep you updated with regards to the TNR. So that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any reports from the Township Council members? Township Attorney?
No report, Council President.
Thank you. Business Administrator?
Yes, sir, I have a guest tonight to talk about the lead copper rule. John? John, Dave?
Good evening, Council.
Hello, John.
Good evening.
Glad to see some new faces.
Good to meet you. My name's John Weirker. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the Water Superintendent. I'm here tonight at the request of the Administration to talk about the federal and New Jersey revised lead and copper rule. The U.S. EPA issued a revised lead and copper rule into law last year. The state of New Jersey added additional requirements on top of the EPA rule. The rule establishes more stringent standards for lead and copper compliance in the drinking water. It also requires every utility to identify the service material of every single service in the system, both the utility side and the private side. We have over fifteen-thousand water services here in Parsippany. The rule also calls for the replacement of all lead services by the year 2030. Though we have never seen a lead service here in Parsippany, the New Jersey legislation was written in such a way that there will be some replacement requirements for materials other than lead. We're gonna talk about that shortly. With me tonight is Mr. Dave Chanda, a professional engineer with the firm of Suburban Consulting Engineers. Mr. Chanda has been our regulatory expert, and will go into greater detail as to what exactly the new rule means to Parsippany. With that, I give you Dave Chanda.
Thank you, John, Mayor and Council. So what I want to do is try to keep this tight, because the lead and copper rule could take us all night. And I want to go into a few of the specific compliance deadlines we're about to deal with on a municipality basis. John laid the groundwork from where we stand. Again, New Jersey issued a legislation, Chapter one-eighty-three, effective last July. That kind of set the groundwork for where we have to be statewide across the board. So the good news, as I go through what we have to deal with on a public-facing level, everyone's dealing with this. So the first big deadline that came and passed was January twenty-second. We need to have an initial inventory of every single water system across the board. So all of our service lines from the utility side, so main to curb, and private side, from the curb stop to the foundation, has been inventoried. Now, the components of that are gonna be evaluated throughout the rest of the year, and frankly, it's gonna be an ongoing iterative process for years to come. We don't have to have that done for some time, but the big deadline was to get that completed and published, which it is available on our website. So I'm not sure if we had a chance to see that or had any questions from the public. So that is available today. Part of that inventory was to try to identify any known galvanized or lead, and John, he laid the groundwork quite nicely, we don't have any known lead, service line. So for us specifically, the Mount Tabor area has what we believe a good section of both public to the curb stop and curb stop to the homeowner's materials to be galvanized. So now we're gonna have to come up with an action plan to address this. The next big deadline is next week. So that's kind of why I was called today to present this and maybe answer any questions, help us understand our exposure. It's February twenty-second. We're gonna be issuing a bulk notice to all these homes, again, in the Mount Tabor-specific area, that we've catalogued to have galvanized steel service materials. So with that notice, there's gonna be two specific letters, one that Parsippany made as a supplement, to the other, which is a DEP-mandated letter. Not much could be edited on that, and it can be alarming and alarmist at first if you kind of read that without the context of what we're trying to achieve here. So we found it best to, again, create a second notice to go along with this. So that second notice is gonna walk the homeowner and the property owner through exactly step by step what it means with your service line material, what we're gonna do about it, and then where the next sets of regulations are gonna come down the pike in terms of deadlines and compliance items. So that's kind of where we're at. Again, the next big deadline's next Tuesday, the twenty-second, is to issue these notices. So it's about two-hundred-and-eighty letters that Suburbans batching up right now as we speak. We've had actually separate meetings to go over the contents of said letters, and at that point, we'll release them. It's from there, we're gonna take the rest of the Q-one, Q-two of 2022 to hit July twenty-second. That's the next big deadline I kind of want to get everyone in the municipality aware of. At that point, we need to develop what's called the Lead Service Line Replacement Program. And that's where things are gonna get a little bit more in the weeds on coming up with a replacement program for any identified lead and galvanized pipe over the next ten years. So again, at that point, in suburbanly assisting the Water Department, we have to have a comprehensive solution to get those service line materials out. Again, utility and private side. So it is a comprehensive replacement program. So in between that, we thought it would be definitely prudent to get the Council aware of this upcoming deadline, different milestones, and, you know, kind of field any questions that may be related to this rule. Again, it is law, it's Chapter one-eighty-three. The New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, they're responsible for implementing the law. They've not done, you know, the greatest of job yet, giving us policies and guidelines on what we're gonna do, but we are gonna hit every compliance deadline along the way, regardless of our regulators that have jurisdiction, so.
When correspondence has gone out before from various departments to the public, I and many of my fellow council members receive phone calls.
Yes.
What's this all about? What do I do? So it would be nice if you shared what you said to Mount Tabor with us, and maybe a several-sentence write-up of what our response should be, who we direct them to.
Similar to, I don't, we had that water quality notice several years ago. I kind of developed a checklist and FAQ, just sentence by sentence, on what to expect, what does it mean? I was planning to do the same, so we'll have that circulated in advance of this publication. No problem.
Okay. Yeah, we have mailboxes here, you can put them in, so we can have them in front of us when we start getting phones.
Fielding the questions, certainly.
The second thing is, what impact will this have on the 2022 budget?
So by July twenty-second, that's when the replacement programs do. In the midst of that, I think we need to get our heads wrapped around the financial impacts of this replacement program. And at that point, John and I will work to see what your exposure is, because at this point, it's quite variable. We'd like to keep inventorying all the system. We honed in on Mount Tabor just because of their institutional knowledge, but we do have to finish the materials evaluation of all fifteen-thousand connections. Again, that's not necessarily due by the twenty-second, but we want Suburbans to start making a good-faith effort to catalog any others. So once we have a better understanding on what needs to be replaced, I think we're gonna be better positioned to understand the budgetary impacts to this.
I know we have obligations up to the curb, but when you're talking about from the curb to the home, whose obligation does that become?
Yeah. Let me, let me. Right now, we're under discussion with the Administration as to figure out that one. That one has not been determined at this point. As far as funding goes to get this program started, we have, for the past few years, had a capital item, the Water Quality Accountability Act. This will definitely fall under that, where we do have funds. We were gonna use those funds for other water main projects and replacement projects, but this has come to light this year, and this will have to take priority. So we actually have some funds available to get started for this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any other kind of questions to field on the topic? I'd be happy to embellish a bit more.
Any other questions from council members?
Yep.
Did you bring a sample letter for the council? The letter we talked about last week?
No, we didn't. We didn't bring it tonight. We're still working on finalizing that. We will get it before, before the annual report.
So, Council, as Dave mentioned, so we had a meeting last week, and a meeting a month ago, and three, four meetings on the lead rule. So we have the letter from John, the cover letter, if you will, then the boilerplate from DEP, which we can, as you mentioned, we cannot change at all. They're, they want you to say, here's the notice, verbatim. No wordsmithing, no nothing, just, so that's why we're attaching our letter to that.
They did that to us once before.
Yeah, exactly. This is standard, and every time you get a DEP letter, you push back, and they say, too bad. And we'll get that to the council way in time so that you be able to preview it and ask questions, and understand the letter before you get the phone calls.
Yeah, I will give you a copy of the mandated letter, and it's a lead letter. It doesn't really get into galvanized. Our supplemental part of that mailing law talked about the galvanized and what it means to the residents of Parsippany, but we can't change one word in that.
Understood.
The EPA in New Jersey have conflicting ideologies on what a lead service line means, and that's the challenge every utility faces in New Jersey. So we're, as the primacy agency of the DEP, we're locked into that law. So it can't be more loose than the EPA, but in some cases, they can tighten up some of these requirements. So this is what we're gonna be, you know, battling going forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr, is that your NDO report?
I'm sorry, I think that's sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Township Clerk?
Uh, no report, thank you.
Township Officers and Committees?
Council President, if I may?
Please.
Of the Environmental Committee Development, I'm sorry, Economic Development Committee, we will be having our first meeting, and it will be open to the public on Friday, February the twenty-fifth, at six o'clock, at the Parsippany Area Chamber of Commerce on nine-ninety East Halsey Road on the third-floor conference room. There will also be a ribbon-cutting for new businesses in Parsippany. Mr. Murray's Music School, Saturday, February twenty-sixth, at twelve o'clock. The location is one-hundred North Bevick Road in Lake Hiawatha. Another ribbon-cutting will be for Birdie's Hot Chicken, Saturday, March fifth, at twelve o'clock. The location is one-thirty-one New Road in Parsippany. The Economic Development Committee presented a plaque welcoming a new business, Halah Plata King, on February the fifth. They are located at two-thirty-nine Route Forty-Six in Parsippany. Again, the first meeting that we're having on February twenty-fifth, it is a Friday evening. All are welcome, and we hope we see some new faces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Graniani. Any other reports?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Council President. I met with the Environmental Advisory Committee for the first time last week. It was a really good meeting, being able to meet the other people that are involved in ensuring our town's environmentally resilient. I also have scheduled a meeting with the Municipal Transparency Committee on February twenty-third at six PM, which will take place here. Apparently, they haven't met in quite some time, so we're going to have to elect a new chairperson to that committee. And then, on the Historical Preservation Committee, that is another one where I did make contact with Nancy Brighton, who is aware of the need for that committee to meet, and will be doing so shortly.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports?
May I add something, Council President?
Mayor?
Councilman Musella, in the future, tell the Environmental Committee it would be prudent to invite the mayor to the meetings, since I have the certain appointments.
The mayor is ex-officio member of all committees.
Yeah, so I didn't know about it, and I like to be in those meetings. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll make sure you know about every single meeting.
Okay. Moving forward, Engineering Report?
Green Bank Road Safety and Improvements Project, the project is complete, except for the guardrail replacement underground utilities could not be moved, but we have received approval from the NJDEP to adjust the stream bed to allow more space for the new guardrail installation. Work will begin in the next few months, once materials become available. No council action required. Two thousand twenty-one Road Resurfacing Curb and Sidewalk Program, the annual road resurfacing and curb and sidewalk project has stopped for the winter. Construction activities will commence once the weather is favorable this coming spring. No council action required. Putting Stone Heights Road Improvement Project, Phase One, construction of the Putting Stone Heights Improvement Project started, and the contract will continue to work through the winter as long as the weather is favorable and he can get materials. No council action required. Rockaway River Flood Wall Levy Inspection, an inspection was conducted of the Rockaway River Flood Wall and Levy System. The report indicated the system is in good shape and recommended several maintenance and repair items that should be addressed. We are presently working with our consultant on preparing design details and a cost estimate for repair work. No council action required. Mount Tabor Street Improvements, Phase Seven, the Mount Tabor Street Improvements Phase Seven Project is in design. We anticipate bidding this project in February two thousand twenty-two. No council action required. Lake Intervale Area Street Improvements, the first phase of the Lake Intervale Area Street Improvement Project is in design. We anticipate bidding this project in March two thousand twenty-two. No council action required. Rockaway Design Projects, the following projects are in design or proposals have been requested. Drumland Drive Stream Cleaning, Jefferson Road Drainage Improvements, North Bevick Road Streetscape Improvements, Troy Brook Stream Cleaning, Sylvan Way Sidewalk Improvements. River and Stream Desnagging Plans and Permits, Eton Road Traffic Study. No council action required.
Okay, thank you. Bids taken: February second, Pump Station Number Four Gravity Conversion Project. Item two, February third, Traffic Signal Maintenance for Littleton Road and Rita Drive, Beechwood Road, and Jefferson Road and Smith Road. Item three, February tenth, Rental of Heavy Equipment. Bids to be taken, March tenth, twenty-two, Route Forty-Six Water Main Rehabilitation, Phase One. Allow entertain a motion to open to the public?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Graniani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is open on any matter.
Please come forward, sign in, state your name and address. You have five minutes.
I'll sign in afterwards. Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I want to emphasize again the fact you have these jobs in the town with these contractors. There has to be a threshold that they don't use the town for their dumping their trash, because it happens more often than you think. And I know, because I'm out there in certain areas sometimes, and I see what they do. So that, that should be addressed. And I want to know if the Economic, what's the name of your committee?
Economic Development.
I'm sorry, Economic Development Committee. What can they do about getting some of these store owners, business owners, to maintain their property in, you know, their public spaces in a respectable manner, especially like along North Bevwick Avenue? You see, right in front of the sidewalk, the street, to me, like, you heard me a thousand times, but is there a way that you could possibly have them have more respect or think of a...
Awareness, awareness of...
Yeah.
...of the refuge.
Yeah, it just seems like the community ends at the end of the curb, and property is turning out to be the exact opposite of community. So it's just, if you could do anything about that, that would be, that would be great.
That would be something that we can discuss at our meeting, and hopefully, something can be done. I know we've, we've tried numerous times when we had the Lake Hiawatha business community knocking on their doors and just telling them to please take care of their property, put the garbage out at the right time, and put them in some sort of refuge can so that the cats can't get at it, or animals can't get at it, and keep it a little cleaner.
Excuse me, I think the ordinances should be looked at and strengthened, because apparently, what I hear, when I make my complaints, when I'm, they, you show me the ordinance. So there must be something lacking in the ordinance. I've seen, to me, it's like common sense, people shouldn't have to be told, but if they have to be told, and then if push comes to shove, eventually, they might have to, you know, not only a warning, but a fine. I just, you know, I just...
I think that's something that we can discuss with Administration, and look at our ordinance, and...
It would be something you would discuss with Administration, because the committee, Economic Development Committee, is not an enforcement committee.
Exactly.
Enforcement committee, they have no enforcement rules whatsoever. They can make recommendations with regards to making an ordinance stronger, or making, you know, you know, to put violations if they don't clean up the areas, but I wouldn't put the committee in that position.
Well, we have a property maintenance ordinance.
Right.
Sometimes it's a matter of enforcement. They could point out where it's not being enforced.
No, but my point is that the committee has no enforcement power, so it's not, you know...
They could point out, ordinance that is not being enforced.
Right. Well, I don't know if that's a hundred percent true, so you can say that things aren't being enforced, but some things are being enforced. I go downstairs, and I see some of the enforcements, and I get, I get the feedback from these businesses...
I didn't say that nothing was being enforced.
Right.
I'm saying that...
But they are.
They can make suggestions when something is not being enforced.
Right.
Yeah, Graniani, a walk down the street sometimes is better than to drive down the street, because you just, you just see, you see more. That's why I made that thing about that, you know, you should get an army jeep and ride around. I wonder if this Build Back Better is gonna help us out with this water line, because it would stand to reason that a lot of this money eventually anyway should be coming from the federal government, I would think, if they ever, you know, figure out what they're doing, whatever Build Back Better means. And would the council be interested, Mr. Musella, you said you wanted to learn about the Highlands. We could have a presentation here with the Highlands Coalition, and it could educate the council and the public about the benefits, win-win, about why, you know, the Highlands Conformance is a positive thing. And in a town like Parsippany, we're a hundred percent in the planning area, a hundred percent. And we don't have environmental commissioners, we have commissions, which, like the mayor just said, are powerless.
Nick, you have thirty seconds.
We should want the, work with the Highlands as much as possible and educate the public. We could do it right here. We'll bring the guys from Booton down, and they can give you a wonderful slideshow about the water protection and land use act. So I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Okay, ordinances for introduction?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four, oh four, and ordinance of the Township Council...
Frank, put the microphone on.
Sorry. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh four, and ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, accepting public improvements on the Waterview Boulevard at the intersection of the Waterview Marketplace Driveway. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on the first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, held on February fifteenth, 2022, and that said ordinance be further considered for a second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March fifteenth, 2022, at seven PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached at the Municipal Building in said township, at which time all persons' interests shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ms. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two colon zero five, and ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter four dash four-three dot three, entitled Economic Development Advisory Committee, amending the requirements for... first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, held on February 15th, 2022, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 15th, 2022, at 7:00 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:06, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 290-4 and Chapter A 445-37 fees compilation related to Noel Country Club utility fees. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, held on February 15th, 2022, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on March 15th, 2022, at 7:00 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the meeting, the resolution made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes, and if I may, I just want to add that, you know, after Mr. Brancato came and gave us that whole presentation, and Mr. DePiro also clarified a lot of things that definitely cleared everything, clarified everything, and the way that it is now written, I think shows that that works and, you know, that we're just, we're giving a preference to our employees and our volunteers, and there is in no way, shape, or form the rumor that was out there that people are getting free golf. That's not the case, so, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Karifi. Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes, may I also make a comment?
Sure.
I would like to thank the council president and the township attorney for taking into consideration the concerns expressed by myself and my fellow colleagues on council, along with the many residents who had concerns previously, which resulted in the redrafting of the ordinance into a much better version for everybody all around that I am happy to vote for. So, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Neglia.
Yes, may I also make a comment?
Sure.
I too am very satisfied with the way the ordinance was written. It clearly states what's in there, as far as nothing is free, everyone's paying for golf, and I'm happy to see that. In addition to that, I like where I see where the high school teams and their coaches are able to practice. I think that's a great thing for our high schools, and I'm very appreciative of seeing that in there. So absolutely, yes on the ordinance.
Thank you, and Mr. DePiro.
Fellow council members, I'd like us to get back to Robert's Rules of Order during these meetings. When a motion is made and seconded, that's the time for discussion, after the motion is made and seconded, there is discussion. Once we start the vote, there should no longer be discussion. So if we could get back to that, I would appreciate it. Now that I've made my speech, I will...
Motion passes.
Justin?
Okay, Ordinance 2022:01, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 450-20, regulating vehicles over designated weight on certain streets. The notice for Ordinance 2022:01 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, on January 25th, 2022, and introduced at the January 18th, 2022 regular meeting. Motion to accept Ordinance 2022:01, be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself, seconded.
A motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:01 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading in a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for Ordinance 2022:01 by myself, seconded by...
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:02 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:02, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 290-4 and Chapter A 445-37 fees computation related to the Noel Country Club utility fees. The notice for Ordinance 2022:02 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, on February 7th, 2022, and introduced at the January 18th, 2022 regular meeting. Motion to accept Ordinance 2022, be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:02 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only.
Nicholas Homiak, again, Lake Hiawatha. Tell me if this is relevant, the use of the fees. Now, being that the Noel apparently contributes nothing or benefits to taxpayers unless you're a golfer, that the fees be used to enhance, not only maintain, but enhance, be more environmentally friendly, be river-friendly, hopefully is going to really happen. I keep on hearing it, but I hope it does. You have 333.58 acres, of which 96.87 acres are forests that surround that. Apparently, they're not given any attention. Now, I adopted that area about 10 years ago. You wouldn't believe the volume and the frequency of the trash, mostly alcoholic. I would rename Noel Drive Alcoholics Drive, because really, the amount of trash down there, alcohol-related, it's unbelievable, but here's, when I drop dead, who's going to keep that area policed? That should become a duty and responsibility from the Noel utility, because when they got those green acres, those 98.87 acres of the wooded lots, and they even say in their propaganda, surrounded by beautiful wooded lots, they have to take on part of the responsibility, those wooded lots. And there's a lot of invasives on that property. Now, they were using Roundup up there, which I was against, the way they were using it, but if they had a team of guys that went into that slope and you cut the barberry down and you dab it with Roundup, the barberry dies. You replant native species, or if you kill the barberry enough, there's latent species in the earth already that will regenerate themselves. Now, I found a colony of Jack and the Pulpit down here. They're not in danger, but they're a very beautiful plant, and they exist down there. But if the barberry keeps sneaking up, that'll be the end of them. So there's work literally there forever, in those wooded lots and the golf course together. We could have a beautiful, really beautiful landscape. And I think that that's what the fees should keep on being incorporated in, not just the facility, but the enhancement of the landscape itself, including those wooded lots. And it's also 263.22 acres of groundwater recharge. So I just hope that the Noel, like I said, expands, and you got history down here. The Irish camp, George Washington had his tent down there for the night. You get all this, all over the walls and everything, and their lodge, it could really be a super place. So I'd like to consider the use of the fees for those purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close?
Motion to close the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:02 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held hereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for Ordinance 2022:02 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2022:03, an ordinance of the Township of the Precipiny, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and modifying Chapter 4, Administration of Government, Section 4-81, Third Party Payment Plan for Emergency Medical Services Provided by Par Troy EMS, Chapter A 445, Fees Compensation, Section A 445-19 dot 1, Emergency Medical Services of the Code of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, in the County of Morris, New Jersey. The notice for Ordinance 2022:03 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills, on January 25th, 2022, and introduced at the January 18th, 2022 regular meeting. Motion to accept Ordinance 2022:03, be heard in their final and second reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:03 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes. Floor is open for ordinance only.
Seeing no one come forward. Motion to close the public hearing for Ordinance 2022:03 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for Ordinance 2021:01 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Excuse me, clerk, the ordinance is 2022:03, not Ordinance 2022:01.
Thank you for the correction, Ms. Grignani. That is noted.
Non-consent agenda resolutions, non-consent agenda, be it resolved, all items with an asterisk or routine and uncontroversial, unattached council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Approval Payroll and Bills List. CFO Juan Arribay recommends authorization for payment, authorized payment of the February 18th, 2022 regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1.65 million. Payment of bills from voucher list of February 15th, 2022 through February 17th, 2022 is